All right, so Shawn Wadsworth from the Albany Planning Board Monthly Meeting to order at 6:30. Just do introduction, Shawn Wadsworth Chair.
Morris West, Vice Chair.
Curtis Fulmer.
Brian Bailey.
Jim Dron.
Let's just keep going around.
Mary Lawless.
Michael Lawless.
Andy Fisher.
Thank you all. So we have the continuance of the public hearing from last month's session. So we're gonna reopen the public hearing. That was duly noticed. Public hearing opened at 6:31. And I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Fisher.
Okay, thank you very much. I realize that I didn't bring my big board from last time. We had, we had most of the discussion last time. So as everybody is aware, there was... So the proposal, again, for the record, is a boundary line adjustment between two properties owned by the Lawlesses here. And there was concern last time that perhaps there was a zoning issue. Because we're dealing with one of the lots is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It would still be technically non-conforming, but it would become more nearly conforming as a result of this boundary line adjustment. Nothing's changed in our proposal. So I guess if there are any questions that the board has or concerns or anything.
I have no further. Anyone else?
I have no questions.
Okay. And we were all here last month, am I correct? Brian, you were not. Do you want a little update? Was that enough update?
Yeah, I'll take a little update.
Okay, so the lot, the original lot is what acreage?
So the original lot, so there's the small lot. You're looking at it, but... The smaller lot with the existing house.
Yep.
As it stands now is about, it's .43 acres. And the bigger lot is 5.98 acres. The big lot would be giving almost an acre to the smaller lot. So the big lot ends up at 5.06 acres. The small lot increases to 1.35 acres. The little lot significantly better. But again, the concern was that maybe there was a, still some sort of zoning issue with it being technically non-conforming. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Great, and I'll just add, so the little roundabout we had was because it's a non-conforming lot and it would still be non-conforming, however less non-conforming. We sent it to council, which is Andrew Serge, for review. His initial thing, reading of it, was that it wouldn't be allowed, have to go to zoning board for a variance. And then he basically missed a part of the ordinances. So I checked in with him again, said, "Make sure you read this part of the ordinances." And what it is, is page six of our ordinance. Just get it up here. Yes, page six, which is definitions. So we're in definition R subdivision, and then number three, boundary lot bond adjustment. "The exchange of abutting land among two or more owners which does not increase the number of owners or the number of lots, and which does not create a non-conforming lot or add to the degree of non-conformity of existing lots." So that's definition of boundary lot bond adjustment. So when he read that, then council agreed that this could go forward as presented, from council's perspective. So that's all I have to add. Anyone else have anything else? If that's enough information?
Yep.
Okay, so with that, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it as is.
As presented?
I'll second it.
James Dron, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. So with that, I will send a notice of decision.
Thank you.
And then I think we need a Mylar. So we can sign it and get that filed at Carroll County Registered Ds. So we can sign this after, or I will... Do you want to get it up? No, because you don't...
Yeah, right, it doesn't go back to you.
So that's that. I will now close the public hearing, and that is done.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the confusion.
Not your fault.
Yeah, make it come twice, it's not a waste of days, so we'll settle on that.
Thank you.
If I can help sometime, I would, yeah, help you guys out.
Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah, submit that to the county office here.
How about 20 miles an hour, I think 20 miles an hour.
Be better, yeah, a little bit better because they come off at 16.
Yeah.
And just go plowing right up, and it's like a loop of rides, you know? And they don't know what's on the other side of that ride, and it's like...
We can have a...
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
They had a truck a couple of months ago, come up from Etopia, flying up, hook the lines, bounce, and ripped the wires right out of the house across the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, so we go to past minutes. Minutes of May 13th, which we have not approved. Here they are. Present was myself, Morris, Curtis, and Brian. James, you weren't here.
That's all right, that's all right.
Anyone have the chance to review May 13th? Matt?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Anyone want me?
I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
So that was Curtis and Brian? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm not worried.
I'm staying?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. Next is June 10th minutes. And for that one, I just gotta pull it up. I was not here. It was Morris, Jim, Curtis, and Malia. So here are the June 10th minutes. It was very short.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, two abstains. Thank you. And the minutes of last month's meeting, which was July the 8th. Brian, you aren't here, otherwise the rest of this worked.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve them as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Jim?
Yep, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstaining, thank you. Motion carries. All right. Those minutes. Next thing on the agenda is Kelly asked us, Kelly Collins, because she'll be leaving soon, unfortunately. And, I don't know, has she hired or...
Yes.
Is Hannah, has hired the new town administrator, so while there's overlap, she's open to train them as much as possible. One of the things that will make it easier for the new town administrators, for all the boards, to get their budgets in early, so they can just start working through it together. So we do have an empty budget till a little later, but just a quick budget overview. I didn't get expenditures yet from Kelly, but this is basically not... I'm proposing same as last year, unless anyone has any.
Except that you added $1,000 for legal.
That's what we tried last year and got rejected by the, same thing.
Yeah.
We as planning board added $1,000 for legal, and then select board rejected.
I think there's talk that there is, there's money there for legal if needed, so it's not like you left out to dry. You know, this money's there, so...
That's always been the discussion, and then the discussion of the planning board was, well then why shouldn't every board have their own legal line? Because then we don't need to go ask permission from select board on when to use legal. So that was the planning board's position last year, is that we should have a...
It was, one of the previous select board members had an issue with this.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, when you put $1,000 in there, if we don't spend it, it goes back into the general fund to reduce taxation, so it's really kind of, it doesn't matter. It's like, we'll be there.
Right.
It's, so if it's in this part of the budget, or this part of the budget, I mean, I would go at it again and see what the select board says, but that's my opinion. I mean, I don't have a beef with it, that was always Kathy's thing, so she never liked that, so, I don't know.
I feel similarly. It's not dire straits or anything, but if we're having a line, there should be some money with it.
Because we have a few issues. We gotta deal with the subdivision. We gotta get that word out of that. We need to get that in front of the town, and we might want to have council look at it. And then we have, what else we have to do?
Oh, structures.
There's, yeah, we have to somehow define whatever.
Well, the ADUs.
Yeah, yeah, so we gotta figure that out, so there might be a couple hours of legal time. They gotta look into it before we can put it in front of the town for a vote. So I mean, we'll spend $600, $700, I would assume.
Yeah.
If we're lucky.
Great.
Right? So I don't know. Probably gotta get that done too, because it's already August. But I would say we thought, I don't know. Whatever you gotta say.
Yeah. Any other budget thoughts?
Oh yeah, it was recent that we drew it up for last year, so you know, I'd say, looks good.
Okay. Well, if we're on agreement, then I think we could go ahead and vote on the budget now and send it. So I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented, which would be for a total of, budget for 2025 for the Albany Planning Board for $7,236, with YIs as listed on the spreadsheet.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. The ams. So that's budget, CIP. This one might warrant further discussion, and maybe we just do preliminary tonight, but same thing, to get it, we could send in preliminary so that at least Kelly could review it with the new administrator. But, and again, I don't have the updated balance from local funds. So this is a copy and paste of last year's, I haven't changed anything. And the balance from local funds is the same as last year, which these need to be updated. So we can go through each one. I guess we should go through each one. General Government Buildings, the Capital Chappel Capital Reserve Fund. Estimated gross capital cost of $50,000. It would be entirely from taxation. And we have been doing $1,000 a year. So thoughts? Keep it the same? Change anything? I don't know if you've discussed this at all.
I, no, I haven't. I'm quite unfamiliar with it, so at this point, I haven't dove into it.
Yeah, just maintenance on the chapel, and particularly the original steeple.
It at least needs to stay the same, because I think at some point we need to be looking at the chapel and moving forward with it, so...
Also, like I said, I think we should maybe not vote on this one tonight, but just do the preliminary overview, and that might be things to discuss at select board, urgency of chapel or other in terms of CIP. So it has been $1,000, we'll leave it at $1,000 a year. Town Hall Property Capital Reserve Fund, this has been at $6,000 a year. Oh, it drops to $1,000 the last year, because by then we would have reached the balance, the target balance, which was a target balance of $30,000. I don't know if that's still appropriate.
What is, what?
This is for any maintenance in this building, like the new heating system, or if it need a roof.
What about the...
I don't know what else it needs.
Outside?
Yeah, so they want to redo the parking lot.
I know there's a $30 something thousand.
Yeah, so I think we need to circle back around that, because we need a little directive from the board to say what their priorities are, I would think. And we did, Kelly had asked me to get together some pricing to repave, to dig out and repave, because you can't just pave this forever, because it's up above the building, so you'd be paving up against like the clapboard.
Oh, yeah.
So you have to kind of excavate it out, and then drop it down a little bit and pave it. But she had asked for some pricing on that, and we've gotten that to them just recently, so I don't even know if it's in front of the board yet.
Nope.
It's probably their next meeting, so we probably want to just wait on that.
Wait on that.
Yeah, and see what their priority is, the board's priority, if they want to make that something that they want maybe to do in the next fiscal year, I don't know.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I like that.
All right. Under public safety, the Emergency Management Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, a target is $6,100. And we've been doing $1,000 a year towards that. Seems reasonable, or has seemed reasonable.
Yep.
I don't know of any news to change anything. Under Highway Department, the Highway Expendable Trust Fund, $1.3 million. And this, I believe, this is generally Passa Conway, right?
No, so the Capital Highway Reserve Fund is just a kind of a fund that we do to create a balance, that's so we have monies if there's some major event,
Yeah.
or a certain project that the board wants to steer to, or that me and the board, whatever. I don't, it's not at $1.3 million, but that's, I don't know where that number is coming from. But we do put a certain amount in every year, which I think we should continue to do.
Yeah. This was historic, I think historically, or historically, you know, in the past number of years, we have been talking about it as potentially repair for Passa Conway.
No, so I think some of that is, is that the...
Number one.
There's the bridge, yeah, there's some Passa Conway, but that's gone away. So that whole government, there was a scenic byways grant that has gone away. And then the, there's the, the next line item is going to be the Bridge Grant Fund. And that was the one we were just trying, we had to come up with 20%
Yeah.
for when that came on the docket from the state, but that program's been suspended, so I don't even think about that. So we would want clarity from Kelly to give us, I can't quite remember, but I think that that is, I think they've killed that. So I'm not, so it was a, I'm not, it was a certain grant for red-listed bridges
Yeah.
that gets in this pool, that if they fund it, then we actually have 12 months to come up with the 20%.
Yeah.
Or they would leap progress to the next project, that's actually a ton of the money.
Yeah.
But I think that they've suspended that program within the state, so she would have to just tell us that before we could make a decent vote here, or I would think.
Okay.
So that would be a couple of questions, and I could get clarity on that, Jim could, but those are the couple issues there.
Yeah.
The highway.
And then I think just general for the roads of Albany, is this kind of $60,000 a year appropriate? Is that keeping up?
Yeah, I think it's...
Or falling behind, or what?
Well, I mean, we've always used that as something that when we wanted to add paving, it's basically we use it to do more paving.
Yeah.
Because paving has gotten so expensive, so I don't think, I mean, with our taxation as low as it is right now, I think it's good to continue to save there, you know?
Yeah.
For when, if there is a year that the taxation goes, I mean, our tax rate goes up, we maybe take a little break. I don't know, but when it's as low as it is right now, I think we should just keep doing what we've been doing. As far as I, you know, as far as I see the roads, and we don't have any pressing need, but I do know the storm last May, we ran into, we spent $85,000 in, you know, just from one storm and damage.
Yeah.
And the feds didn't declare that a FEMA event.
Yeah.
So we got no money from the feds, so we used, we used, we actually transferred money from there to cover that.
Yeah.
And they put it back in the normal highway budget to be able to do that, because it would have been an issue.
You know, spending a third of the budget in two weeks on a rain event, so... Yeah. Good. All right, so we'll need some more information from administrator and select board. Drake Hill Road, that had the target of $7,54,000.
Right, that's the bridge.
That's that same thing.
That's the same thing, that's the bridge, yeah.
And we have been doing $8,000 a year, so...
So that, that's the thing, though, like, I don't even know if we should fund that if it's done, so...
But what else, so what happens to that bridge?
So I would, I mean, if it is done, right, so then I would say, put it in the Capital Highway Reserve Fund, and then we need to repair the bridge, to work to the bridge.
By done, you mean if the balance of the fund is full?
Well, no, if they're not gonna, if we're not gonna have any ability to get a grant, I think we should try to repair the bridge.
On our, with the taxation?
Yeah, yeah, either out of the Capital Highway Reserve Fund, but that's a, that's a discussion I got out of the board, and I, that's, I don't know if that's really a planned work thing or not, but I don't think it, I don't think it hurts saving the money for it. Because we're gonna have to do something.
Either way, yeah.
Either way.
You can transfer it.
Yeah, yeah, so that, yeah, right, so the town would just vote to transfer that money to do the repairs. And on the one, I would just say, we're gonna, we would say we're come from not taxation, because it would, oh, we'd already, we'd already saved it. It just kind of comes from taxes, but previously it was taxes, right?
Not new taxes.
Not new taxation, so...
Which is the point of CIP, to spread out those bumps.
So whatever we do, like, we don't want to just stop, we just increase what we do to the Capital Highway Reserve Fund.
Yeah, that would be the question, because we've been thinking that 80/20, this $8,000 a month, or $8,000 a year would get us our 20%, but if we're now 100% responsible for it, that means we probably got to go up significantly, so that...
And I would suspect it's, I think this is a border thing on any boards or not, I think. I would suspect they'd want to fix it and not build a whole bridge.
Yeah, because that number was, that was number was for a new bridge.
Total replacement.
So there's, you can do...
Repairs can be done instead.
Yeah.
So how, well, that's at the select board's discretion to order a plan or an assessment?
I would do, yeah, I would expect so.
So there's a lot of things coming on the select board agenda here.
Yeah, I would start with engineering, to do an assessment of where it's at, what we can do.
Okay. Cemeteries, Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund, a target of $25,000. And that's just been at $1,000 per year. I think that seemed reasonable in the past, that seems reasonable to me now.
Yeah. And we're actually just starting to get going on some of our extra maintenance on the cemeteries.
Like backlog maintenance?
Yeah, there's some backlog stuff, so next year would be a better view of it, so I would say we can leave it the same for right now, and then...
What kind of stuff is the backlog? I mean, I know there's a lot, I'm sure there's...
Well, there's fences that are, there's fences that are not put up, that have been laying on the ground for years due to discrepancy. There's split rail fences that have fallen down, rotted, you know, post-rotted, so the things are laying there. Up in Passa Conway, there's some trees that were cut down inside the cemetery,
Yeah.
and they were left as little stumps, and of course, all the saplings keep growing up there, and so we're just continuously paying to maintain that, where we would like to take a little bigger step and either grind the stumps under there, or do something to get it, so you can mow the land
Yeah.
and not have to keep desapping the saplings, yeah. Same thing with Moody Cemetery, there's pine saplings in a back 25% corner of the cemetery there. There's tree limbs hanging above
Yeah.
that we want to get out of there before they fall and break the headstones, or injure someone.
Yeah.
So it's things like that, that...
Yeah.
Defining the boundaries of them, they're all growing in, so the boundaries of the cemeteries aren't defined. So trying to get that cut back, and considering all that stuff extra. And then we're looking at headstones, some, there's some that have fallen over and broken, especially on the Moody Cemetery and Canada Street. Headstones that have fallen over and broken.
Yeah.
And there's an argument whether it's our responsibility or not, but we're either gonna pay to work around these things, or we're gonna get them up, make them look where they should, respect the people out there, and then make it maintainable easier. So that's the goal.
All sounds good. So this might be underfunded, but we'll, again, we're just kind of review, first pass review for now.
Yeah.
But you won't have any numbers probably till next year, that's...
Nah, we're pushing to get some of this stuff started, the lighter things. But yeah, a bulk of it will probably happen next year, especially on the headstone repair.
Okay. And our last one is other, the reevaluation trust funds, that's just for the tax revaluation that happens every five years. So let's just keep up to date with that, and last time we had estimated about, became $3,500 a year to manage that five-year bill. So I'll ask Kelly for update on that one, to see if that cost has changed at all. That should stay the same. That's it for CIP, unless there are entire other categories that we're not addressing that...
I just don't, I just don't understand, what's the reevaluation? What does that mean, the trust, trust fund? What's the trust fund?
I think this is the assessor, it's the, what we pay the assessor to do the, every three years or five years, reset the tax rate, right? This is my general understanding of it.
And does that, is that like a bid process, or how do we select the person that does that?
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know for sure, but I think it's, I think we're using the same as we used previous time.
Yeah.
But I don't know how they've done about it.
I was just curious, because I know that there was a lot of problems with the Conway.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if it was the same person, or...
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is, I don't know.
I don't think it is. It's the, it's like Avatar.
Avatar, yeah.
Yeah, they've been doing, they've been doing it for, yeah, I don't think it's the same as Conway. But they've been the assessor in the town for a long, long time.
Obviously, we have a totally different tax base than Conway.
Yeah, and then if there's any other areas that might have a significant cost for the town that should be in CIP, something to just keep thinking about, if, I don't have any, but... So that's that, uh alright, CIP review. So, yeah, I. I think the rest of it really is. Going into. Looking at our ordinances, um I guess the question is, do we wanna do that in meeting or set up workshop? Which is basically extra meetings. What I remember hearing from Select Board is really targeting this one thing of.
That was the issue we ran into, yeah, um and didn't have a a clear answer. I think because of the wording.
Yeah. And then the, the thing that's been on the planning boards, you know, mine for a bit is the definition of structure, which kinda goes along with. ADU, cause that is a vague enough definition that things are getting in there, that maybe shouldn't, or being built. And then generally context, I think there's the case to be made that the entire ordinances could use a professional review beyond. Uh I'm not a professional, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but as far as writing ordinances for a town. We can go through it and do our best and see if we think it's appropriate. We could target just one or two definitions, we could look at the whole thing.
I think we need to clean out the sub- the subdivision.
Yeah.
Approval process. And then we need to define what um that's ADU building. I don't, and I don't have the stock for evidence, some professional review, cause. That's just more regulations, and who needs more regulations? Problem with regulators, when they have nothing to do, they just write more regulations.
Not even, not even having a professional come tell us what regulations to put in, just having a professional come in and tell us. Where, what we think our regulations are doing, what they're missing, you know.
The where are they from? I mean, that's the problem.
Who's the professional from?
Yeah, right, I mean, like, I don't want somebody from Boston coming in and telling us some regulations or whatnot, I mean, like, so like. We have a couple issues that that have come up. Let's just deal with those.
Yeah.
I mean, in my, my, my opinion, obviously, just my, I mean, just deal with the few issues and keep it simple. I mean, I used to watch towns all around us just totally.
Overregulate themselves.
Regulate themselves to stupidity. And they have legal issues constantly, they're sued constantly. Go build something Conway, it's a friggin disaster.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, they're, they're just a for, a mess.
Yeah.
So I think we should just simplify and deal with the few issues we have. And if something else comes up, we just deal with it, you know?
Yeah, uh in meeting or workshop, I'll just go now? Read through and redefine?
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not really, I don't think to just wing it right now, I mean, I think we need to.
Wanna pick out the, the, the two or three that we wanna look at and then we should all. Review them.
And then, then send in our thoughts on it, and then we can tackle it at the next meeting. And it would just get it done. You know, I mean, there was some language in the subdivision approval that. Broadens the cluster.
Yeah.
View that, so if I just revisited that in my mind and just sent email, this is what I think should be out of there, and. Everybody else on the board could do the same thing, then we'll just address that, and then we can get something in front of the town to vote on. Cause I mean, we can't vote on it, we can't change anything, the town has to change it.
Correct, right, so. We vote to present it to the town.
Right, so. And then the same thing with um, you know, the, the shed with the bathroom and kitchens and bedrooms and all that, we gotta deal with that. But I think it just takes a little bit of time, maybe we can all just email our thoughts in to you and.
Yeah.
Make an admission to do that by the next meeting.
Yeah. So I'm hearing. Subdivision? Uh definition of structure. Definition of. Well, ADUs and just dwelling unit, I think.
Yeah, I think dwelling unit is the biggest definition.
Dwelling unit and ADU. And I'm thinking, how about we just go look at the definitions right now and just. Is that alright to just read through the definitions quickly, not word by word, but just to see what other ones maybe are needing attention?
Other than those two?
Yes.
Have we had issues with that? I mean, that's the thing, so like, if we haven't had issues, then why are we diving into it? It's just creating more.
Right, I'm not saying there are issues, I'm saying. Just read through and see if anyone sees anything else that, oh yeah, that has been an issue, uh or not, it's just not, I don't know. We don't have to, I'm not saying there's something I'm planning to change.
No, I'm just, what I was thinking is just so we could actually get it done, it's just. Email our thoughts for the next meeting and then we can. Just get it done, so it's not something we talk about every meeting. But I, you know, of all, you know, I've been on this board a couple of years now, I've never, we've had only a few issues, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll put it in an email and we can all. Do our own research in the off time.
If we can bring up another something.
Put it in the email.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you come across something that you think needs attention, just add it to the email chain. Sounds good to me. And uh, I don't know, Select Board report?
Well, we do have a, a new TA hired. She's supposed to start on the nineteenth, I believe. There's really no movement on the Route sixteen. Next big thing would be a second and or a third, I guess, informational meeting that hopefully would get. Advertised better, um to get more people here.
There's not a date.
There's no date yet, no.
That one, whatever, the last meeting. They said, we have the plan in place for this middle section of the road, for the middle section of sixteen. And he said, we could get a vote right now, and if we get a vote right now, we can do it, we can move ahead. And called for a vote, and it was a lukewarm vote, uh people just maybe weren't ready to actually, right?
Yeah, at the last meeting?
Yeah, at the last meeting, at the last public hearing meeting, and so that middle section is not a go, because that vote wasn't. Clear enough from the town that it was a go, so now we're waiting for the next meeting. To get the public informed, to have that vote again, and that's, I mean, I am all for having that stuff happen sooner rather than later. So that, it can't happen until the town votes on it.
Right.
So I don't know what we have to help them with urgency, but.
Well, the, the one thing we're gonna do to help them is, we might do it like a direct mailing to the town residents. Last time it was going, supposed to go out to everyone.
Yeah.
Like.
Or everyone on sixteen, it was only the people on sixteen, it wasn't all residents.
Well, it should have been all residents, but, well, I, I'm not on sixteen, I'm, I'm three quarters of a mile off there, but. I travel sixteen constantly and I'm entering and exiting.
Oh, I think the.
Sections that are.
Requirement for the notice of that meeting.
Yeah.
Stipulated a butters.
Yeah.
So I think it would be good to stipulate all residents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was people in Madison that were notified at this last meeting.
Yeah.
And I couldn't find anyone in Albany that had been notified of the meeting. Madison got things in the mail.
Yeah.
You know, which.
Strange.
DOT supposedly dropped the stuff off at Conway Post Office and the Madison Post Office and, but we don't know what happened. They don't know what happened. And focus, I think, at the meeting, you were here, yeah, the focus, I think the group. Doesn't know the focus. Of what we need to feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
There's lots of things to worry about, but. We've gotten to bring in the, the focus.
Is this project even on the ten year schedule?
They were doing warnings out here a month ago.
Something to do with Crete Rock, I think, though. Has something to do with that culvert there or?
Yeah, that's something to the box.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, I just wonder, is it, I mean, has anybody seen?
Specifically looked for it.
Cause I know you say that if we voted for it, they would have moved forward, but I don't know if that's the case.
No, it didn't get a move forward go, there was a call for a vote, there was a vote, but it wasn't clear that it was.
Yeah.
Unanimous or one way or the other, so it just got mull basically.
I think we need to get the town's blessing.
Yeah.
To put it on the plan, I think is where we are.
Oh, okay.
Don't quote me, but I think that's. And if we don't do this or come up with it, pretty soon we'll miss that window.
Yeah, cause the last time I looked, I didn't, I didn't see it the last two, like, I didn't see it within three or four years on the plan.
Yeah.
Someone said fifteen, I thought, it'd probably be fifteen years. I think the conversation was if we were able to get it put onto the plan, it'd probably, it'd probably be fifteen years before we saw action on it.
Physical action. Within a ten year. We can look.
Yeah.
We can look. Yeah, just get going, I don't know why they'd be waiting for, I mean, no one's gonna ever agree on anything.
They needed time, if the town doesn't prove it, they're not gonna do it, so that's like, we have to have this meeting and have the residents feel informed enough and okay enough. To approve it, cause otherwise it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
They're spending all the money on the, you know, the planning and the survey and stuff, but until we approve it, it's a no go. Alright, any other Select Board?
No, that's it.
That's all I got, anyone else, anything else?
Both in two.
It's a shop sucking it.
Who's second, Kerry's second? All those in favor?
I'm tired.
Alright.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.